Thank you. Four o'clock, and we're starting the special meeting of the Clayton City Council. And we have an agenda, and right now, we're going to call it to order. And roll call, please, City Clerk.
Thank you. Councilmember Clovin?
I'm here.
Tillman?
Here.
Juan is absent. Vice Mayor Trupiano?
I'm here.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You have four members, and you have a quorum.
Thank you. And we will now do the pledge of allegiance. You please rise with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This special meeting has been called, and I'll get to the agenda, to look at our options and discussing them. Thank you. For replacement of a permanent city manager, and for interim to handle that in the meantime. At this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment, for non-agenda items, and I have two cards already. Ed Miller, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just am here to observe that nothing says we want the public as involved as possible as a 4:00 p.m. meeting on a Friday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Rogers.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for all of the time and dedication you've put in to serve in the city of Clayton. I realize it's frustrating, and I get frustrated listening to it in the audience. And so, I just want to say thanks to all of you. Do appreciate it. I understand you don't want to listen to people drone on and on about issues, but there are times when a three-minute limit is very restricting. During the last meeting, I found that, you know, I came to speak on the sales tax initiative, and then the assignments was brought up, which you also voted on. And so, you don't have an opportunity to speak on both because you've already blown off your three minutes. So, I just want to say, I have an objection to the assignments. And that is, it can easily be used to misrepresent the finances of a city. I'm not saying it will be, but it can be. And if you're pushing for, you know, tax, more taxes, you can make the statement, "The five-year deficit will be approximately $3,44,000. General reserves are $2,720,000." That's a lot greater argument, right? Than, "The five-year deficit will be $3,44,000. General reserves are $7,700,000." That can easily be used because now you'll list the general reserves without the assignments. Okay? And I would not like to see that done if somebody brought that up, and they say, "What about the assignments?" He said, "That money's already committed, and it doesn't count. It can be abused." Not saying it will, but it could be. I also want to say, I think letting the LMD expire instead of renewing it with a modest increase is a big mistake. Jeff wrote, "The LMD is a special tax. This means it can only be used for specific purposes. The tracking and administrative burden to ensure record-keeping and financial reporting is burdensome." Okay? I mean, I'd like you to reconsider letting it expire because people knowing that the LMD tax dollars can only be used for specific purposes, I think, is a great incentive. If you tell me we want to tax or pass a general parcel tax, and it becomes wishy-washy, I won't vote for it. I would renew the LMD with a modest increase. And so, in my last 32 seconds, once again, thank you, everybody. Do appreciate it. If you're looking for a new city manager, I would like to see us use a different recruiting company than we used last time, if that is, in fact, the person that has brought us people over the years. And I would like to see somebody possibly that lives in Clayton because I think they can identify more readily with the citizens. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Okay, anybody else in the audience that wishes to address the council? And if you do, and you didn't turn in a card, would you please do so at the end?
Absolutely.
Your head.
Good afternoon, City Council and city staff. I just want to thank the city manager for his about-a-year service. You're a class act, and I wish you the very best. Thank you for the letter from your, you know, from the city manager email. And you're an upstanding guy, and it was hard to see the city council meetings. Even though I didn't live here in town, I, it was painful. And I apologize to witness all that and what you've put up with. Anyway, thank you so much. Bye now.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council on a non-agenda item? Please fill out a card before you. Good. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Scott Denslow, local business owner, Dana Hills. "Hey, Jeff, sorry you couldn't join the rest of us today and all of your fellow city council members. I'm Peter, Kim, Jim, Holly. Great to see you guys today. Jeff, why doesn't anybody want to work with you? Why doesn't anybody want to work with you? I'm the owner of a local small business, and it's my job to work with all types of folks, and I do. It's very rare that I come across somebody who just makes it so evident that he does not wish to work with others." I thank you guys for the time.
Are you having a technical interruption?
That would be on that end over there. Yeah. Hi, Jeff. Was that you? Anyway, Jeff, it makes me even sadder to think of people who might work for you. You ever see the movie Office Space, Jeff? That part where he incredulously exclaims, "I have eight bosses, Bob?" Well, guess what, Jeff? You've been in office for a very short period of time, and you've been through eight city managers. Eight, Jeff. Now, let's throw in all the finance managers, planners, attorneys, and at least eight ignored consultants that were paid for by the city, and you bullied away once they offered their expertise and professional opinions. Despite no experience in their relative fields, you knew better. Nice use of your limited, of our limited money, dude. Eight consultants. Eight, Jeff. I mean, we had people like Brett and Rena who just wanted to serve their community, and it appears that maybe they left because of you. Nobody wants to work with you, man. I don't know if you're driving them off intentionally or if people just really don't like you. Eight, Jeff. Brett, I'm sorry that you had to deal with this bullshit, my man. I really am. I wish you better in your next job. But apparently, this is how we roll right now in Clayton, and the common denominator is Jeff Juan. The cool thing is that it's getting outside of Clayton now. I encourage everybody to read the story printed online in the Contra Costa News yesterday. I don't know if it's true, but they suggest that Brett may have resigned so that Jeff can secretly bring in Laura Hoffmeister as the interim city manager so that she can kill the Olivia project. I have no idea if that's true. They're not my words, but that's what they're surmising. I hear that more prominent local and Bay Area reporters are starting to get wind of this as well. So, it's just a matter of time until this all comes crashing down on you, Jeffy. In the meantime, it's just hard for some of us Claytonians to watch right now. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, Scott. And in the future, please address all items to the entire council. Thank you. Okay, anybody else that would like to speak that hasn't filled out a card? None? And any online? None? Okay, we're going to close. Whoops, excuse me. Mr. Gavidia.
I do. And you know what else I like to do? Here's what I love. I love pointing out lies. That story on the Contra Costa News, some of us know Laura Hoffmeister. It'll be interesting to see when she demands a retraction from whoever that person who calls himself a journalist published it. Okay? Let's go over. Eight city managers. I love that statistic. How did we get to eight? How did we get to that number? Let me see. Interims are only here for a short period of time. They're supposed to go. You guys, if given the chance, you would indict Jeff Juan with the Kennedy assassination if you could. The meeting on Tuesday came down to the last remaining group of people that cannot get past their hatred of Jeff Juan. Let's repeat things, and because, oh, I read it somewhere, it's true. Former Commissioner Miller. I read that, oh gee, maybe Mayor Diaz is taking bribes. And you repeated a very racist accusation. It's all over social media. Now, you, that's right.
Yeah, but I didn't insult anybody in the audience.
I'm not insulting you. I'm pointing out a fact that's not a lie. I've got, it's up on the social media. Look, you guys complain about everyone else causing division. Councilmember Clovin, when do you rein these people in? Never, ever. I'm doing my part. I made a commitment to you on Tuesday, Holly. I want to work to end this division. But this nonsense is going to continue. It's never going to get better. All right? We have got to knock this nonsense off. Some of you hate Jeff Juan. Guess what? He got reelected. Deal with it. Deal with it. He didn't come in dead last, nor did I, for that matter. We need to knock this off. We need to knock this off, okay? Otherwise, it's just going to get worse. The city has a financial issue, all right? Let's get through it. But to continue to attack one man and blame everything on him repeatedly, all you're going to do is get a lot of pushback from the people who reelected him. Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to address the council on a non-agenda item? And would you please fill out a card if you haven't?
All right. First off, Brett, thank you very much. You have done an amazing job. Amy, you have done an amazing job. All of the staff that you have brought on has done an amazing job. Dana always does an amazing job. I had the pleasure of working with her closely when I was Planning Commissioner. I don't fault you for leaving. I don't fault any of you if you leave. I would never want to work in an environment like this. It's ridiculous. For those of you that are watching and don't watch that often or don't know, the mayor sets the agenda. So, at the end of every meeting, if you stay until the end, they ask for future council items that they'd like to see agendaized. But the mayor has the prerogative to bring those forward or not. I'm with you, Frank. If people think that's what I've been saying since 2019, when I've attended almost every council meeting, and I read those agenda packets in an insane amount of detail, if they think I'm here to just attack Jeff or attack somebody, fine. Let's agendaize Holly's request. Let's have an independent investigation about what's happening here. Because any person with a sane mind could look at a government institution or a corporate institution and say, "Something's wrong here." The amount of turnover that has happened in this city and the conversations, which, yes, they're unsubstantiated rumors, so have an independent person come see if they're real. Let's do it. Let's agendaize Holly's request that she's been asking for for nine months, and it never comes forward. If you don't believe me, if you don't believe her, if you don't believe Brett or the rest of the staff, let's have a third party come. Now, I hope, Mayor Diaz, you will put that on the agenda, and you guys will have a good discussion about it, and you will consider doing it. It would go a far way, you know, Frank's right. It would go a far way to end the division, to have an objective stance. Now, I do express concern that if they come back and they say, "These are all of the horrible things that we've found," it'll be just like the last consultant report about a year ago, talking about all of the ways that the staff is underpaid and all of the improvements that need to happen that just went to the, you know, to the side with no recognition. And then, some people would get up here and talk about consultants and waste of money and et cetera. So, it's a matter of you guys taking the information, wanting the information, and doing something with it. Please, listen to the public and to your fellow council member, and agendaize this. I think a lot of people in the community would like to opine on it, and I would like to hear the council have that discussion. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I do have another card, and it's from Lauren Kendorf.
Thank you for letting me speak today. Lauren Kendorf, El Portel Drive. All I want to say is, here we are again. The last number of years have been a revolving door to the city manager's office. And whatever the case may be, whatever the reason may be, it needs to end. Our city needs to have some stability, to be able to look at what's at hand, to be able to look to the future, and not this ridiculousness. I've sat at just about every meeting for the last year, and it has been hard to watch. It's ridiculous. It's embarrassing. And to treat a respectable, knowledgeable, decent human being, the way I've seen it happen is, it's heartbreaking. So, I mean, I've appreciated the openness and the jumping right in, the community engagement, all that has happened. And I'm just not understanding why we have another city manager leaving us, and especially this one, who I've come to know and highly, highly respect. So, can we do better? Can we treat people better? Can the city get its act together and stop the revolving door?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on a non-agenda item? And we have nobody online? Thank you. And nobody else standing up here in the Hoyer Hall? Public comment on non-agenda item has concluded. Thank you.
The hand went up.
You do have, a hand went up? Yeah, excuse me. All right. We'll reopen this for three minutes.
And if I may, if you are online and intend to speak to this item, please raise your hand now so that we can add you to the speaker queue, or we will take this as the last speaker online. As a reminder, it is star six to use the raise hand feature if you're dialing in, or just click raise hand at the bottom of your screen. Thank you. Hey, Ray Correa, your microphone is available.
Hello. Roy Correa, and I hope you can hear me well. For some reason, the connection, the network that I have between the council and myself, you know, I work with, you know, I've got business partners, et cetera. It doesn't occur. So, it's kind of weird, kind of funky. So, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
We can hear you fine, Roy.
Okay. Let's be brief. You know, we got the same old stuff again by the, you know, several people who typically come on and say the same stuff, meeting after meeting, and accusing Jeff of so many things. And, you know, stop with the scapegoating. You have no evidence of anything, and your demeanor is not civil. It's uncivil. And it amazes, really, to see that kind of behavior displayed. And it's typical. And need to stop. Look at yourself, okay? I'm just being blunt, honest here. And, you know, and the other thing is, with respect to Holly, okay, she's got her, you know, she plays her role. But if you look at historically, and if you view the videos historically, the replays, and look at the demeanor, the behavior, the language that's used, you know, you can count it, be honest, on Holly just being, you know, averse, not contributing, not being a team player, and, and so, you know, and I'm saying that clinically. So, and it gets old, it gets tired, and it's wrong, it's bad, you know? And with respect again to Jeff and what he has contributed over time, last year in particular, and continues, the budget analysis that he was doing last meeting, and along with Mr. Clovin, I thought that was a good discussion, back and forth. So, stop it. You know, act like an adult. Have respect manners. And with respect to the city manager, you know, you know, there's a, perhaps there's a, this may sound pejorative, but I think maybe it's kind of a little bit of the iceberg phenomenon. And I didn't see the city manager taking any action on these things about, you know, calling all that, and, or, you know, the accusations, et cetera. So, where were you? I have to ask you, city manager. Why didn't you take action? You know, that's your role. And I could go deeper in that, but I'm going to let it go. It's like, please, grow up. Thank you.
All right. One last time for anybody else that wishes to address a non-agenda item. No further online?
There are no additional speakers online.
We're done? Oh, yeah, we do? No, we're done. Just, I don't see anybody online.
That is correct.
Closing, public comment. Now, to the agenda item that we called this meeting to address. And the city council was informed a week ago about the departure of our city manager, and it was prudent at that time to request a meeting such as we're having today in order to begin the process of selecting a process and a firm and so forth to first find a interim city manager, and then, secondly, a permanent city manager. And that's the purpose of the meeting today. Mr. Brett.
I'm actually going to turn it over to your HR manager, who's going to kind of lead you through this process.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz and council members. Tonight, we're going to talk about the permanent replacement, the process for the permanent replacement for a city manager, the process for obtaining an interim city manager, and also the possibility of an ad hoc committee in order to evaluate resumes and things like that. But I would like to do it in that order specifically. So, first, talking about the permanent replacement, the current contract with Bob Murray has a provision that if the, in the event that the city manager were to depart within one year from the contract date, that they would provide that service at no cost. So, the first point of clarification I would like to receive from you is whether or not you would like to proceed in obtaining Bob Murray's services again for a permanent city manager.
That's the question.
That's the question.
Again, but I understand that Bob Murray and Associates is having a congested agenda at this point, and may not be able to execute on a new city manager search for at least a month. Is that what you've gotten as well?
So, we haven't engaged the firm because we needed to get that direction from you as a council before we did so? So, I'm not sure where you've got that, but we haven't engaged them.
Yeah, and my intent is not to make a decision today on the firm that we picked, just to get sure that the process is open and make sure we do have at least a couple of firms that have been submitting or will submit a proposal to us. Yes, and I'm aware of the fact that Murray and Associates does owe us a complimentary search.
And we received an email yesterday as a council from another recruiter from the same firm, offering his services to us. Not the same guy that worked with us, Gary, but somebody else. Yes.
And I got confused, too, when we got that email. It was Bob Holland Associates, not Bob Murray and Associates. So, it's a different firm that reached out yesterday. Yeah.
To provide clarification, to jump in here real quick, what we need to get a sense of, if you want us to trigger that, then we need to move forward on it. But if you don't, then we need to do an RFP and NASK, essentially the.
Well, I want to hear from the other colleague. My preference is to put out an RFP because, again, I'd rather not spend unnecessarily any money if we have, in fact, a free service owed to us by Murray and Associates. So, I want everybody else to try.
But we don't need an RFP for that.
Wait, yeah, can you repeat that again, Mayor? You say that, say what you just said again. Can you repeat what you just said? I think you don't want to do an RFP search if we.
No, I do. I want to.
Can you, okay, that's what confused me.
No, what I said was, I would like to do an.
Go back on your mic.
It can hear me. Anyway, we'd like an RFP. What I would like to see, on my personal view, is at least two or three proposals of what it was going to take to find a city manager. I don't believe we can wait 30 days from Murray and Associates to assist us with a search for a full-time city manager. However, aren't there organizations out there that have people, a reservoir of talent that can provide interims, that can get us through until, if that's our choice at the end of the line here, we use Murray's complimentary search?
So, just to be clear, and we will get to the interim piece next, I wanted to start with the permanent search first and determine whether or not we want to exercise the right to use the existing contract at no cost, or would you prefer to solicit proposals from multiple recruiters?
That's me. I like to hear from my colleagues here. I'm only one voice here.
Okay, well, I'm just going to jump in and say, I thought that Bob Murray and Associates did a very thorough, it was a very thorough process. I was personally happy with it. We had a bevy of candidates that we narrowed down, then we narrowed it down again. We did interviews. We did find Brett, so, and it is at no charge. So, that would be my recommendation, is to use them again, unless anybody feels differently.
I just want to make sure that, based on bringing Brett here and their knowledge of the culture in Clayton, that the same diligence that they provided in the first service, search for us, would be performed in the second search. I'm just concerned that there might be some scars that would prevent that from happening in the same quality that we received it the first time.
And I would concur with Vice Mayor Trupiano and Councilmember Clovin. I like the fact that we don't have to pay Bob Murray and Associates. I'm a little confused on the 30-day waiting periods. Maybe, Amy, you can opine on that.
I did not receive that information, so I can't really speak to that. I know Bob Murray has a lot of staff, and they really are one of the premier recruiting firms. So, I would be surprised if they didn't have people available.
Okay. That's the part that was confusing me, and I was trying to understand a little bit better. So, if we, I hate to call it a freebie, but if we have a freebie, I prefer to use that. And just for a point of clarification for the rest of the community, this is Bob Murray and Associates who we used to find or bring Brett and, as well as the other candidates that interviewed with us, is different than the search firm that brought us Rena, is different from the search firm prior to Rena. So, we've used different firms. It's not the same firm. So, I wanted to alleviate, you're welcome. I wanted to alleviate that concern that residents were expressing. So, my preference would be not to have to pay any additional money for an RFP, et cetera.
That's my preference.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay.
But I still would like the RFPs for at least another agency or two to give us a proposal to have in our hip pocket. That doesn't cost anything to do that.
Except time, and then it might slow down the process, possibly? Maybe I can.
So, I think it's important to know, with my pending departure, RFPs take time. They take time to write, they take time to get the proposals back, they take time to go.
They take time to write, they take time to get the proposals back, they take time to grade, and you're gonna be a city manager down when that's happening. And so my only caveat is if, if, if you think you wanna take Bob Murray, I think you should act and move on it. Because an RFP will only delay your process by probably 60 days, Amy? Yeah, maybe more. If you gotta wait for proposals, grade them, go through it, I mean, you would not be even making that decision till, you know, probably deep into May at this point.
And it's pretty clear that Bob Murray already has all the marketing information and descriptions and the conversations with the five of us to be able to do this effectively.
Let me be clear, my preference would be to use Bob Murray's service for the search for the new city manager. The question now is, what do we do in the meantime for, for an interim? Okay, and I don't know if Bob Murray is ready to do that, but I was informed that they weren't gonna be able to get to anything for, for a month.
Okay, so the first point of clarification, because we will talk about the interim next, but I really just wanted to make sure I had clarity. First step, for a permanent city manager, do we want to employ Bob Murray's services again at no cost on the provision in the existing contract?
Yes, do we need to vote?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
I think it's easier to just do it that way, yeah.
Move to use our freebie with Bob Murray? And we, we contact and pursue that, please.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, moved by Clovan, seconded by Vice Mayor Trupiano. Please, city clerk, would you take the roll?
Thank you, Councilmember Clovan.
Yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan is absent. Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you, you have four ayes with Mayor Juan absent, or, sorry, Councilmember Juan absent.
Thank you very much. Okay.
So the, the next piece is to talk about the interim city manager. So some options that are available to you are for me to contact Bob Murray and Associates and see if they would also be willing to do that, keeping in mind that it would be at an additional cost because it is not part of the current contract. So if you don't have a preference, it could be Bob Murray and Associates, it could be a myriad of, of different recruiting firms. So that would be the next piece, some direction on seeking the interim city manager. And just one thing to keep in mind, and I'm not sure if this is common knowledge for a lot of people, but sometimes the interim city manager then applies and becomes the permanent city manager. I've seen that quite a bit in my career, so it's just something to consider.
Okay, based on past experience, for example, when we had the need of a chief of police, we, there was a group that the city administration went to, and they had a reservoir of candidates to fill that interim position for chief of police. I understood as well that they also have a group of people that can fill in for assistant city manager, or excuse me, interim city manager position as well.
That's correct, yeah, that's correct.
Can we, can we?
So it's actually, we're talking about two slightly different things, but I think it's, could easily be achieved by reaching out to firms. Some firms strictly do recruiting. Some firms have typically retired annuities who serve as consultants who specialize in recruiting and have consultants available to step in as an interim city manager.
Again, from past experience, the mayor, and this mayor was some time ago, she personally went out to Joe Sabranti, for example, and recruited him and brought him to the city council to be the interim. We also know there's another gentleman out there that was our interim police chief for a while, and he just finished running a huge operation at the East Bay Regional Park System, much larger than the city of Clayton and with a much bigger budget than the city of Clayton. And he's available, I believe, to be contacted. So there's some research we can do individually without spending any money, just picking up the phone and ask them. So that's one of my suggestions. Vice Mayor.
Could we find out at least from Bob Murray and Associates what that cost associated with searching, you know, providing us with an interim?
Certainly, certainly. And on that note, we could, in the meantime, if you gave staff direction, go back, get some names, and then come back on the 19th and address that possibility at that time.
Can, can you expand on that a little bit more? That we would provide you some names that we have in mind?
Well, just based off what Mayor Diaz was saying, there are these firms that have a pool of consultants. And so if that's something that you would like to entertain, or you could give me direction tonight if you wanted to, for me to start reaching out to see if there are available interim city managers. What I'm trying to say is, there are two different ways you could go about getting an interim city manager. One would be through a recruiting firm, one would be through a firm who also has those ancillary services of providing an interim.
I'm trying to recall how we got Ron Bernal, and I think it was a firm helped find him. Councilmember Juan and I were on that ad hoc committee, I think. Now I might be mixing it all up. Maybe you can, maybe you can research that and find out how we got Ron. I could be confusing. I know we were on the ad hoc committee to find Bob Murray and Associates and figure out which recruiter, recruiting firm we wanted to use, but now I can't recall how we got the interim. It might have been Reina going out, finding and soliciting from whatever pool that you're talking about of annuities, because Ron was, and then bringing that back to us, and then we got to choose from that list of people. And we chose Ron. So I would concur with that being okay to do.
Okay, okay, all right.
Do you need a motion on that, or?
No, that's, that's just direction.
Do we need to add any point? We haven't taken public comment on this agenda item at all, are we supposed to?
We'll take public comment.
But we're making motions and everything and ending stuff.
We haven't, we, we, well, that was just to settle the, the first issue, the long term. But I, I'm going to open it up for public comment on this unless you have any other discussion. Mr. Clovan, you're smiling.
I'm good, thank you.
What? Thank you. We'll now open it for public comment on this item. Anybody wishing to speak, please fill out a card, and you have three minutes. Mr. Hartley.
Good afternoon, Council, Ed Hartley, 972 Kinston Drive. Is this gonna be the only public comment on item 4A? Or are there other, if more motions come up, is there gonna be more public comment opportunity? Do we know?
I think this is it, right?
Okay. I would like to, and I think a lot of members of the public, many of whom are pissed off at that we are even discussing this right now.
Thank you, could you watch your language too?
That are very upset at this council, at why we are even having this meeting. I would like to understand the cost to the city of the last two searches that resulted in a permanent city manager. And I'd like to know how that's gonna be paid for out of this year's budget, which is, I think it was force-balanced to even be released. The other thing is, I think the public would very much like to understand from somebody who is not sitting at that dais and even in City Hall, to understand and explain to the public what the proper relationship is between a city manager and the city council and the community. The impression that I had with Mr. Prebula was that the city manager runs the day-to-day operations of the city, and the council provides guidance. As best I can tell from talking with a lot of people in this community, those lines were either blurred or blatantly crossed numerous times where members of this council are trying to run the city and, and kick the city manager to the side or force the manager to do certain things that council should not be involved in. And I think the, the public needs to know, what, what standard are we looking at here? Okay, what is the city manager's job? And what is the council's job in, in relation to working with the city manager? To the extent, and it seems there's gonna, there's gonna be an ad hoc committee, I would like to request that there be some citizen involvement on that committee, or at least have some members of the public who can ask questions or at least observe this process. Because frankly, I don't know what credibility this process is going to have. And if there is gonna be room for any public involvement of this, I volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, public comment on this item? Nobody in Hoyer Hall? Please fill out a card, or just come up and then fill out a card, please.
I would like to just say, I disagree with what he just mentioned, that the city manager runs things. I think it's very important for the council to have oversight on what's going on. There's the ability to spend a lot of money on special projects that maybe a lot of people aren't agreeing with, maybe they are. I'm just saying that oversight is never a bad thing, it's always a good thing. I'll fill out a card.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, you look like you're dying to come up here.
Yes, thank you. Just two things real quick. I know that Mr. Rogers is concerned about consultant costs and stuff, and, and I just wanna come through and say that, you know, this recurring, is it gonna be an annual cost that we have to do this stop and start again with searching for another interim and another, you know, city manager? Who knows, we might be looking for, I mean, Brett brought this whole team on. We may be looking for an HR director, a finance director. I, I don't know, we may be cleaning, we may be refilling the entire house, we don't know at this point. But I do know that, that that is a hell of a lot more expensive than a little bit of a count, you know, one consultant here or there. And, and it's also more expensive if you don't hire a consultant on something that you don't know and then make some very expensive, bad decisions. One of the things, there's a couple of things I wanna speak to also that were kind of addressed here. One is, I'm sure that other people have not had much experience around looking at how the different cities operate and how city government and county government operates, but it is traditionally, it is tradition for, in, in all of these other jurisdictions, for the city manager to have interaction directly with the city manager only. The city staff then to be managed by the, you know, by, by just the city manager and the city council, that's the interface that the interaction occurs. And this council has shown interest in sort of jumping that, jumping that role and micromanaging into how individual pieces of the city staff's business is conducted. And that, and that is what the concern is about. If you micromanage right through your city manager, making their decisions for them, I, I saw Mr. Juan ask for essentially the city manager to give him his spreadsheets for his calculations so he could double-check them. That kind of stuff is gonna just drive people right out of that seat. And so, the micromanagement. The other thing is about the, the parcel tax. The advantage, which even Jeff had stated, of letting the LMD lapse and then folding that in in a larger parcel taxes, is you don't realize that there's a cost every time there's an election.
I'm sorry, Mr. Miller, if you can please return to the topic of the agenda item.
Okay, very good then. I wish us to save money by treating our staff with great respect and letting them do their job so that we can reduce our recurring costs in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else wish to speak on this item for public comment? Seeing none from the audience, anybody online? Hang on.
I was getting up, you turned your head away. Okay, so.
You're gonna speak on this item?
Yes, I'm gonna speak on this item.
Good.
Thank you, Jim. So I would like the council to consider, as you think about both the interim and the full-time manager, I know you're just talking about the recruiting process, but I think it's important that you guys do diligence to make sure that whoever the interim is is coming in is going to understand the budget challenges, since they will be the ones now closing the budget alongside with our finance manager, with all of, that we have going on in our budget, to see that kicked down the road and just bubblegummed together. I don't think it would be the right thing for the city, so I ask you guys to please consider that diligence. Also, you know, whether we want it to be or not, or whether it's intentional to be or not, people are talking about Clayton outside of the city. Any, all somebody needs to do when they're deciding whether they wanna come to our city to be a city manager is watch the myriad of, of, of videos, and they'll see that a couple of years ago, our, our friends that have gotten up today just stood up and said, Peter Clovan, you're horrible, Peter Clovan, you're horrible. And then folks are saying, Jeff Juan, you're horrible, and it's nothing but division. And so, and just people are writing about it, people are talking about it. So what are we gonna do? And I'd like the council to consider, what are we gonna do if these recruiting firms bring you back nobody? That they search out there and everyone says, I don't wanna go to that shit show? What are you gonna do? What are we gonna do? Are we gonna kick all of these budget issues that we have down the road? Two more years, three more years, four more years? Are we gonna just keep spinning our wheels? How are you gonna ensure that, that we're gonna actually bring someone into Clayton? I, I don't know if we could bring someone into Clayton more motivated than Brett to run in here and see what he knew and still came in, arms open to the community. So I, I'd like the council to think about, what do you do if you don't get any candidates? Or the candidates you get are not qualified to deal with these really, really challenging issues? What are you gonna do? We need the leadership.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, anybody online? Be prepared, my friend, be prepared.
Jim, it's my time, this is called public comment, please refrain. You turned your head, that's the second time tonight where you kinda missed something. Keep up, I know it's a tough job. I saw something during this segment, so Stephanie, I wanna make sure I stay on topic here. I saw something during this segment that concerned me. Mr. Hartley used the word pissed, and you immediately corrected him on his language. Again, it's not your time to talk. If you have a concern, bang your little gavel, you love to do it.
Mr. Denslow, this is not onto the topic.
I'm, I'm sorry, that is a little off-topic. Mr. Hartley, during this topic, was criticized by you during public comment. And I watched during three minutes of his comment, you were squirming, you were wincing. And for people who cannot see, which is most of the folks watching right now, you were squirming, you were writing, you were wincing. You weren't doing that when other people were talking. I question whether you have a personal bias against Mr. Hartley and whether it might question, or if, whether it might affect your decisions.
Thank you very much for your comments, thank you. There's nobody online, I take it, for comment on this item?
There are no speakers online.
They're not. And there's nobody else in Hoyer Hall? I'm closing public comment on this item, bringing it back to the council. Just to sum up, where I see we need to move forward on the selection of the city manager and that process. One, I am open for an ad hoc committee. Two, I believe that there should be a public input element in there. In the past, this community has always had a number of citizen groups that participated in the interview process of candidates for the police chief and for the city manager, and I think that's probably a wise thing to also consider. Anyone else?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm all for the citizen community. I, that was one of my suggestions I was gonna talk about today, and community involvement. But what would the ad hoc committee be doing because we're hiring Bob Murray and Associates, right? That, I guess I'm not sure what.
Yeah, the, the ad hoc committee would be essentially reviewing resumes, applications, doing the preliminary screening before bringing it back to the rest of the council.
Which is what we all did as a group before.
It's at your discretion whether or not you wanna have an ad hoc committee.
I personally don't think we need an ad hoc committee to, to screen the resumes. I'd rather all of us look at the resumes together and then do the same thing we did with the rubric.
And they were screened already.
They were screened by the, by Bob Murray. They were screened by Bob Murray.
Sure. It would just be your next layer of preferences and things like that.
We did that.
Yep. I would prefer to keep it the same way that we had it, but I'm trying to understand how, where the citizen involvement comes in. Once it's screened, then they would review them? I'm a little confused on that piece.
So, if I could provide some maybe input that could help, too. So, the thing you have to remember, if you're all involved in reviewing resumes, you have to agendize it. So, timing gets pushed out further than a two-person ad hoc committee, so that's why they're typically created. The second thing is, typically what happens is, a community panel is what you'll see when you're interviewing candidates. So, typically, in a given process, a candidate could come in on the same day, he would, he or she would interview. They would interview with a community panel, and then they would interview with the city council. And then if the city council took it to a narrower list, then they would interview with just the city council again, if that's how far you guys wanted to go. But it's typically the interview process where the community engagement part of it happens, usually in their own panel. And typically, it's on the city or the county. Typically, it's made up of relevant citizen groups. So, if you had, we don't have a chamber here, but if you had something similar to a chamber, if you have another very active citizen group, if you have, typically your board of supervisors member might be on it. So, if that'd be Ken Carlson for you, that's typically what happens, and it could be as big as you want. It could be, you know, three, four, five, six, however many you feel is appropriate to the city. But that's typically what you see in these types of instances.
I thought the process by which we selected our last city manager with Bob Murray was pretty effective in the way the council worked together to get to that decision. The screening of resumes that were brought to us, the conversations we had on two or three different occasions to get to the final decision was pretty solid. I'm not sure the ad hoc committee is necessary at this point.
I would agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that if we're going to use our freebie, but we're talking about the interim one now, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, for the, yeah, I don't know why we would even need citizen involvement with the interim piece at all.
Yeah, not for the interim.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that we were all talking about the same thing.
There is a lot of crossover between all three facets of this. That's why I was trying to keep it a little streamlined. But basically, if you want to go with the ad hoc committee, as the city manager has expressed, it may shorten the duration of time. That would be the one benefit of that.
And that's just to choose who the firm is that we use to find the interim? That's what I'm trying to understand. What is the point of the interim?
The ad hoc is for the permanent.
Okay.
Typically, ad hocs created for the permanent--
Which is what we did.
To, right, to review resumes so that that can more timely be reduced down to the top, pick your number, six, seven, that you're going to, as a full council interview, when that full council interview happens, typically there, in a lot of instances, is a community panel attached with that, two separate panels, that the permanent city manager candidates would go through.
But we already said that we wanted to use Bob Murray freebie, so there's no reason to have an ad hoc for that piece.
So, it has nothing to do with picking the firm you choose.
Okay.
They review resumes of the candidates that you would be. That's what an ad hoc typically does.
Okay. Then--
To be fair, we could still have an ad hoc for the permanent.
Sure. Then maybe we do need to do that. That's why I was getting confused, because we're only talking about the interim, and we keep going back to permanent that we had already closed. So, we're kind of--
Do we need to make a decision tonight on an ad hoc committee for a permanent? I don't know if that's necessary.
I don't think we have to.
It's your call. I mean, it's just timing again, so, you know, it's just, it's funny.
Yeah. I still don't under, I still don't see the need even for the ad hoc committee, even for the permanent, because we wound up coming through this process and found you through Bob Murray and Associates. What I was thinking of, were for the citizen involvement, and we don't have to determine that tonight, was just like we narrowed our 11 candidates to seven, seven to three, and then we in-person interviewed those three people, the staff interviewed them, and maybe then some citizens from the community would also interview. It would be a whole day of, you know, community, staff, council. And then, and I remember Bob, is it Bob Phillips?
Gary.
Gary Phillips, from Bob Murray, then gave us, provided us the feedback. So, we don't have to determine that tonight, do we? Okay. Just that we're going with Bob Murray and Associates for permanent, and you're going to research--
We'll solicit Bob Murray or other related firms to get a candidate poll sufficient enough for an interim decision by your council.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Any other comments from the council? What's your pleasure? What would you like to do?
Do you have sufficient direction?
Okay.
Okay. Is that, thank you very much. Oh, would you like to use it?
No, I'm just giving for you.
Okay. That concludes this item number 4A, and we are going to adjourn this meeting at 4:56 PM until our meeting on March 19. Thank you very much.